The first. To the first ever town hall event organized by the Women Directors Development Committee, I O D. Um, and this event was organized that the organized as the at the instance of the president and chairman, governing council of the Institute of Directors Nigeria, Dr. E J G Dema. Um, in a nutshell, this um, event is supposed to be or intended to be a two-way communication between the female members of the institute with the key executives um at the institute. I E U will hear from them and they would also love to hear from you. My name is Bimbala Wright. I'm a member of the Women Directors Development Committee. And to provide additional context and to make the necessary introductions, I'm going to be handing you over to my colleague and a member of the Town Hall Organizing Committee, Yetunde Bankali Bernard. Um, she's a brand communications and a media expert as well as an identity coach. Yetune is the Chief Experience Officer of the Y B B Company, which is a reinvention and e- evolution firm. Yetune will serve as the moderator for this event and she will make the necessary introductions as well as anchor the conversation between the participants and the I O D executives. Um, I hope we are all going to be active. The feedback is critical so that, you know, in line with the um, the institute's objectives, just to make the experience better for us all. And I will hand you over to Yetune now. Please enjoy, make the most of this opportunity and God bless you all. Thank you very much. Yetune, over to you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Good evening, everyone, ladies and well, I would say gentlemen, because I can see some gentlemen here. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Um, this evening, it's such an honour and a privilege to anchor this first ever town hall meeting for the W D C. So um, I'm going to try and go through this quickly um. And I'll be introducing sort of like briefly the panelists. Fortunately, I um. Okay, I could see some comments. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm just going to try and focus in here and, you know, I'll also look at your comments from time to time. Please note that you know, at some point, we'll we'll get to a part where you can ask questions and you can interact and the rules will be to raise your hands um so that I can see that and it can be orderly. So once you raise your hands, I can sort of like see that and um take questions um for our panelists. I I'm hoping that this would be like Mrs. Wright said, this would be an interactive session. Um, feel free to express yourselves as you can. So this is for me, let me just keep give it a brief intro. Um. I have been in I O D for a few years, but I haven't really participated uh actively, just because you just think, okay, should I? Should I not? Are we permitted to speak here? Can we say something? So I'm very excited to be moderating this session. So um I'm just like you, if you feel like, oh, um, I'm not typically a talker, so this is the the best time for you to raise those hands and to have these conversations because um I I would like to, you know, obviously, first time we have, well, not the first time, but this is a woman president here, so um. Dr. E J G Dema, President Chairman Governing Council I M D. And we have the first Vice President of the I O D, Alaji Tchani Borodo. I I I'm not sure. Okay, yes, I see you, sir. Um, we'll be expecting you to come on as well at some point. And there is Otumba, Mrs. DeBola Oshibogu. Thank you so much, ma'am, for being here. I see you. I see you. I see you. I see you. So um, those are the panelists for today. And let me just quickly go through the program. So the first thing that we will be doing, like I said, I just did a quick introduction so that it's not you know, it to elaborate. Um, you know, these people are quite, I mean, if you want, I I'm sure I will not be able to read through profiles this evening to take too much time. Um, they are heavy personalities. If you want, just check them online and check them and in in different places you can find that. So the welcome address I would be um. Welcome address will be by Otumba DeBola Oshibogu, who is the Chairperson of the W D D C. Um, ma'am, are you ready to do that right this minute or should I give you some time?
Yeah, I'm ready. Once you are.
Go ahead. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Yetune, and it's a pleasure. And it's an honour to have you anchor this program. Okay, and just in line with um Yetune's um initial comments, please feel free to put in your questions in the chat box so that we it's easier for us to pick those questions and then the president could attend to most of it. So I just thought I should put that forward. So, good evening, everyone. And let me first of all recognize the President and Chairman of Council, Dr. Mrs. E J G Dema, F I O D. Uh, you know, you're, this is your event. Uh, we organize this for you to be able to interact with your people, with your constituency. So we're waiting to hear from you. And of course, I believe that we're going to get a lot of feedback that will help you in administering the institute. Thank you very much, ma'am, for being here. Our special guest of honor, the second Vice President of the Institute, Alaji TJ Borodo, F I O D. Uh, well, people wonder why should we have a man amongst us? But I tell you, there's nothing the female wants to do. If the men are not around them, we probably wouldn't have ambassadors taking things eh to the boardroom for us to have a better representation from uh from uh those sectors. Uh, also, the D G is here with us. Um, I know that this is your institute. We're all working for you. Uh, we're all doing everything to make sure that you get a shine at the end of the day. So you're welcome and we appreciate you being here with us. So other governing council members that are here present, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I'm indeed pleased to welcome you all to this maiden edition of the twenty twenty-three Town Hall Meeting organized by the Women Directors Development Committee, W D D C of the Institute of Directors of Nigeria. This is a special committee created by the Institute of Directors of Nigeria with special emphasis to meet the needs of our female directors. The W D D C had always organized very impactful programs aimed at enhancing the capacity of both aspiring and existing female directors across all sectors, such as the Women Directors Luncheon, which we normally hold annually, and the Women Directors Conference, which is also an annual event. However, in the last one year, we had introduced other programs to improve our mandate, such as the Tabletop Conversation with Dr. Derry Awosika, the Chairman of Access Bank, T L C. She was the first uh guest speaker on that platform. Also, we held a fast, a fireside chat with one of our distinguished members, Lady Made in Hebrew, F I O D, the Chairman of Guardian Newspapers amongst others. I am delighted to inform you that this year, apart from the Town Hall Meeting, the Women Directors Development Committee will be organizing more impactful programs for the benefit of our female directors. In commemoration of the twenty twenty-three International Women's Day Celebration, W D D C will be organizing yet another tabletop conversation on Tuesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three, with Professor Shadie Ugushola, the first female female Vice Chancellor of the University of Lagos as our guest speaker. She serves as a, she serves under an invitation. Oh, sorry, this serves as an invitation to all here present to attend this program, which I must confess to you is free. We all say there is no free lunch, but this one, there's a free lunch with this one. So two, two new programs have been added to the robust bouquet of offerings being planned for this year, namely, the Board Apprenticeship Program, which is a non-for-profit social program that seeks to provide clear pathway for women to attain positions of board leadership and are pleased and selected organization as apprentices. And also the Executive Coaching Program, which is in collaboration with International Coaching Federation, I C F, who will offer coaching sessions for female leaders, senior executives and board-level women leaders. This session will be conducted by certified coaches from I F C Nigeria. I'm happy to note that W D D C, over the years, have lived up to its expectations and had completely represented the interests of female directors in the institute. This year, Town Hall Meeting is to encourage open discussion um um around inclusion, participation and expectations of female members of the Institute of Directors and also create an opportunity for female members of I O D to interact with the President and Chairman of Council, other council members, with the aim of strengthening the sense of commi- community amongst the female members across all membership cadre and across all sectors. The essence is to increase the number of I O D female female members in Nigeria, increase the level of participation by I O D female members at W W W D D C programs in particular and the institute's program in general, as well as securing feedbacks from the I O D female community. I therefore urge you all to participate actively in this event. Thank you all for your attendance. We appreciate you being here with us. And let me assure you, you're going to have a fun field day. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much, ma'am, for that concise yet elaborate um opening. So I I think that um at this time, without further ado, I would also like to invite the um Chairperson, so it's for E J G Dema, to give an opening remark um for us tonight. Ma'am, are you here? Are you ready? Yes, ma'am. Should I go?
Yeah, thank you very much, uh moderator, Mrs. Yetune de Bankoli Bernard. Thank you very much. Um, it's really a great pleasure to be here at this Town Hall Meeting. I can see that we have like seventy-eight participants already. Some people are sending me messages that they cannot join with the flyer that we sent, so I try and do something about it so that we can have as many people as possible join us. It's really um encouraging to see so many people joining and so many people trying to join because we know the situation we are in in Nigeria today, in Lagos today. So we cannot take it for granted that people are able to join the news that they hold I O D in high esteem. I thank you very much for all the effort. So I would formally start by uh greeting our special guest of honor today, the first Vice President of the Institute, Alaji Tchani Borodo, F I O D. And distinguished members of the Governing Council and E S C O here present as well as past presidents and elders committee. I especially greet our every chairman of the Women Director Development Committee, I O D Nigeria, Otumba Mrs. DeBola Oshibogu, F I O D. And all the members of the Women Director Development Committee, I O D Nigeria, the D G, who is leading our management. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, members of the institute. It is a great pleasure that I welcome you all. I join Otumba DeBola in welcoming you to this premier Town Hall Meeting organized by the Women Director Development Committee. Distinguished directors, this Town Hall Meeting is aimed at providing opportunities for female members of the institute as the chair said, to express their views and opinions about their journey with this institute so far. To propose suggestions that would further enhance the impact of the institute on the existing female members as well as potential members. I O D Nigeria takes a lot of pride in its female members, I must say. In its forty years of existence, three eminent female members have held the position of President and Chairman of the Governing Council, apart from my humble self. I salute the memory and pioneering efforts of Chief Mrs. Olutoyi Lakuri, F I O D, F I O D, the second President of the Institute and also the first female President of the Institute. I also salute Miss Benedicta Molo, who D F I O D, and Miss Senyala Fadai, D F I O D, my predecessors in office on whose shoulders I stand today. It is now over one and a half years since I took over the service button handed over to me by my my predecessor. Inclusiveness is one of the pillars of the guiding philosophy of my tenure, which is future readiness of the institute. So the Women Director Development Committee, W D D C, has served as a great fulcrum for achieving this inclusiveness. So I commend the Chair, Otumba DeBola Oshibogu, the Vice Chair, Mrs. Chizamalize, and its members, who have at one time or the other served as Chairman of the various engagements, which he has enumerated with the committee carried out in the past months, such as that of the one we are having today, heavily chaired by Mrs. Bimbala Wright. I commend you all for the successful events, which included or include the mentoring event, the by fireside chat, the tabletop engagement, the business luncheon to facilitate networking amongst us and with others, as well as the annual conference. These have been professionally and successfully executed. There are many in the pipeline, as mentioned by the chair, such as the apprenticeship scheme, which have been tabled to the Governing Council, and we are happy to say that they have been approved, reviewed and approved. In all of these, we pay tribute to those who had been here before. Those who had chaired this committee, people like Dr. Stelo Colly, O O N, the founder of Emza Pharmaceutical, someone like Tishana Anthony and others that I can not mention today. We have today in the Presidential Consultative and Strategic Committee, that is the body that advises the President, a female member, Mrs. Fumi Roberts, who is serving as the honorary legal advisor. Women are leading several committees of the institute, such as the Nutrition and Governance Committee, Ethics Committee, Audit and Risk Management Committee, Agricanagro Allied Committee, et cetera. These are key committees and they're deciding their responsibilities credibly, effectively and creatively. They bring so much innovation to the table. Even when they serve as Vice Chair, they are not subdued. Their positive impact is felt. Our women serve as Governing Council members, members of Executive Committee, bringing much dynamism to bear on the institute as a body. It has become obvious that to get things done, assign them to a woman. Well, this is not to say that we are giving women undue advantage. Rather, the women are earning it. At I O D, we believe in gender partnership. Together we win, just as Mrs. Amina J Muhammad, Deputy Secretary General of United Nations, said in her keynote address at our last annual Directors Conference. You cannot fly with a wing. We need the two wings to do so. We recognize the efforts and support of our special guest of honor, the first Vice President, Alaji Tchani Borodo, in all our activities. These are geared towards achieving gender balance and fully optimizing the abundant human resources that reside within the institute. With him in the saddle, in a few months' time, perhaps he will represent the He For She movement that is being kindled today. I also thank the D G. He's always there, even though I cannot see his face right now. The objective of the Town Hall Meeting is not only for us to render stewardship to you. Yes, we are here to serve you. It is an honour and privilege. It is also to gauge the level of impact our programs and interventions that as an institute have on you and get a sort of direct feedback on how you would like us to serve you better and even harvest ideas as we all come from different backgrounds and have various or varying exposure, exposures. So we would listen to you. I know you have a lot to offer in so many ways. So please feel free to share your views on areas in which we have done well to help us strengthen these areas and also in areas that we need to improve upon or even totally new areas or paradigm shifts, as they say, for the better. Your institute is still in the growth, its growth trajectory. We are strengthening the secretariat. The D G, or CEO, is striving to take care of the day-to-day matters, even though we are not spared the Japa phenomenon, the devil in our nation today. We, however, promise to continually rise to the challenges proactively and as they occur, such as the current socio-political and macroeconomic um challenges that we face today. Resilience is the word. We are unrelenting and are ready and willing to build together with you a great institute out of Africa. I enjoy you to engage more with the institute in order to take advantage of the various opportunities available. We should pay our dues timely and ensure that we update ourselves by attending numerous programs and events. This is one of the ways that we can take advantage of in networking, taking um advantage of opportunities, business opportunities that are bound here. Once again, I welcome you all to the W D D C Town Hall Meeting and I encourage you to speak openly and participate freely. We are all sisters here and I dare say the he's for she's are also here to help us. I wish you all fruitful deliberation. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you for that. Thank you for sharing objectives with us and for also encouraging us here um to participate. And you'd, thank you so much, especially for, you know, also giving us a brief background of how far so far. I think that um there are maybe some people who don't even know that, okay, this is what is going on here. Thank you for that. Um, quick yet elaborate again um description. Thank you so much, ma'am. And so um going in line with what you just said, leading the he-for-she movement, would like to invite the I O D's first Vice President to give his own opening remarks. Um, Dr., I apologize, let me quickly make sure that I'm calling the right um thing. So Alaji Tchani Borodo, F I O D, to please give his own opening remarks. Please note that afterwards, please listen attentively. Please know that afterwards, we will um start taking questions, contributions um immediately after he speaks with us. Thank you so much, sir. Are you here? Can I go ahead?
Yes, moderator.
Thank you so much, sir. Let's go ahead now.
Thank you. Well, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, indeed, I'm absolutely, absolutely delighted to be invited at the special guest of honor at this maiden edition of the whole meeting. Well, nice by women directors of women. As a special guest of honor. I want to join the President and Chairman of Council, my President. Welcome you all and express my happiness about the various developments and projects being implemented by the W D D C for the advancement of the cause of the institute, especially with female members of the institute. As you are aware, W D D C is a standing committee of the institute and a very integral part of I O D Nigeria, being a strong voice for the adequate recognition and representation of our dear female directors and a strong advocate for gender equality, inclusion, especially among. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, this event is quite unique as it is the first time the leadership of the institute is able to engage with members in a less formal manner. And to listen to their thoughts, views, opinions, first. I believe that after this event, the institute will be more attuned to the needs of its members and this will add value to the relationship and agenda mutually beneficial results. I therefore urge you all to seize this opportunity actively engage with the President, the secretariat and the leadership of the Women Directors of Women Committee. The Kuni and knowledge about the institute are raised issues and concerns on how you can actively continue to support the activities of our dear institute through impactful programs such as this. Finally, let me thank my President, Madam President and Chairman of Governing Council, Dr. Mrs. E J G Dema, F I O D, as well as the Chairman of Women Directors of Women Committee, Otumba Mrs. DeBola Oshibogu, F I O D, my elder sister, for inviting me to this two-minute conference. I welcome you all to this maiden edition of twenty twenty-two Women Directors of Women Town Hall Meeting and I wish you fruitful deliberations. And I assure you, I'm a he for she. As the President has said, by the grace of God, in the next couple of months, she will successfully finish her eventual tenure. And I will succeed her by the grace of God. I assure you, whatever programs new and existing, the Women Directors of Women Committee are going to bring them and I owe you a part of personal thanks. I thank you for, and I bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Alaji. Thank you. We hope that you are going to be here because I'm sure that um there will be some questions that we can, you know, direct towards you so that you can, oh, I can see some some people are like clapping already. I could see the clapping emoji. Um, yeah, there's quite a few of them. I don't know if you can see them running up. So thank you so much for that. For that applause, yes. Oh, wow. Okay, we have a lot of claps, claps, claps. Well, amazing. Thank you, everyone, for participating. I can see that this is thumbs up. I can see all of that. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Now, we, this is the time that we have been waiting for. Thank you, Dr. Mrs. E J G Dema. Thank you, Otumba, Mrs. DeBola Oshibogu. Thank you, Alaji Tchani Borodo for giving us that opening um and. and sort of like setting the pace. So tonight, I'm just going to be taking questions. If you are ready, you can just raise your hands. You can also drop your questions in the chat box. Perhaps, you know, it's noisy where you are, you can, and you still want to say something. Please drop your questions in the chat box and also you can raise your hands. So I'm going to just give a quick, off the top of my head, a few things that even I sort of like picked up from the conversations that we had tonight. The first time that this is happening, it's sort of like shows a an eagerness to change, to move things forward, to listen to, hear, to understand. And so I do not think that we should take that for granted. It doesn't happen everywhere. It's not, no matter how, I mean, look at where we are right now. Some things just happened. Some things are just thrown at us. We don't know how, we don't know when, we don't know anything. So the fact that this has been put together, I think that this should be a laudable, it is a laudable gesture. And so because of that, I'd like for everyone to be as free as they can be. We have, like, I can see right now, we have about hundred participants. For sure, you would have something to say. I'm not sure that I can see. So I know that IT is here as well. So you can just also check. Because I'm not sure that I can see everyone, just in case I'm missing. I am missing some hands. So you want to help me with that? If anyone is raising their hands right now, please let me know. So the floor is open, like I said, for, for questions. It's not just questions. You also have contributions. You have remarks. There's something that you want to say about the programs that are holding, the ones that are about to hold, your suggestions, what, what impact has WDDC has on you as a female member of, of IOD? What, what are you expecting? What have you seen? What is working? What isn't working? This is the time for us to, to have this conversation. This is a town hall. And yes, I can see someone saying, good evening, good evening to you, good evening. This is the time to have. So Q and A. I think that somebody says, I see one.
In the chat.
Yes, I see one just now. So the person says, good evening, everyone. I wanted to understand where there is no collaboration between other chapters of IOD. If you're a member of IOD UK, why can't you also be a member of IOD Nigeria? That's an open question. Go ahead ma'am. You're going to answer that, doctor?
I said the president.
Oh, okay.
On anymore.
Oh, she's not, looks like she is not here at the moment.
Who can answer that for now?
I didn't quite get that ma'am. What did you say?
I said maybe IG can answer since either Digi or the first president can answer.
Okay, doctor. Okay, okay. That's, I'll leave me. Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. And yes, I did. I did. Thank you very much, madam. Thank you very much, everyone. Good evening again. I, the answer to the question is quite simple. IOD Nigeria is an estate of IOD UK, which means there are quite a number of collaborations and our relationship between IOD Nigeria and IOD UK. But in terms of membership, what has defined the path to membership? It's basically the difference between the two. And the whole idea is that when joining Nigeria, we want to be sure, want to be very sure of the capacity of the director that is joining the institute. And the path also involves an attempt to, or a path to improve the capacity of whoever is joining. I have come across experienced directors who felt they didn't need to take our course, the one we call the CDC one. And after taking the program, after taking the training program, they called me and said, oh, thank God I took this program. One or two things that I thought I knew that I didn't know. And that is what, that is what makes all the difference. It's just the difference in climate, the difference in expectation, the difference in the, what I would call the code of our two countries that requires that we let you know the peculiarities, the peculiarities of being a director in Nigeria, different from every other country. Of course, we have the global best practices and everything. Everybody accept that. But then there are peculiar things that has to do with the Nigerian code of corporate governance that we think you need to know. So that's why we take you to those path. And well, at the moment, there is no, what I would call respiratory path between us. But one thing that I would in Nigeria is that if you already have fellow of IOD UK, the path of becoming a fellow of IOD Nigeria is made quite simple. At least that concession has been put in place by the governing council of IOD Nigeria. I think that's much I can say about that, that relationship for now. But there is a very clear relationship between the two organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I believe that your question, I understand the president wants to say something about that as well. Doctor Gdemba. Or should I repeat the question? Do you hear?
Maybe you can repeat the question, but I had the, the, the last parts of what the Digi said, my, I had to change my device. It was so.
Okay. So the person was asking that why is there no collaboration between other chapters of IOD? So for instance, if you're a member of IOD UK, why can't you also be a member of IOD Nigeria? That was the question.
I had what he said. Yes, I believe I said it. There's collaboration. I mean, it's just like if you read law in the United States and Nigeria, I have to go to the law school. So there's lots. And we also learn from them. Some of our committees, we love them so that we also learn some of the things they, they learnt from there, you know? And then like you said, if you're fellow, it has gone to council that if you're fellow of IOD UK, you automatically become a fellow of IOD Nigeria. So I think I'll end at that.
Thank you. We have a few more questions. First one up. What roles are women in IOD going to play in the forthcoming twenty twenty-three general elections? That's interesting.
IOD women, what role they are going to play?
In the forthcoming twenty twenty-three general elections.
All my friends ask them that. I hope they all have their PVCs.
Let's start from there.
Of course, it's what is happening concerns us and we should be mindful of that because every director is a leader. I think we are leaders in our own rights. I mean, we are contributing to the GDP of the country. And the question is not unexpected. We made some efforts to see if we could get the, the the players in the the political arena to, to come and tell us what they're going to do to improve the environment for directors. It didn't quite scale through. So what the council decided is that it was at the point in time where the environment, like we have today, you know, there are so many things you want to do today that you may not go ahead with because of the external environment. So we now, the governing council decided that we should set up a committee that will engage those that imagine and see as them questions in terms of how they are going to see to the needs of the directors. It's like taking advocacy in practical terms, you know? And it's sort of interrogate them and tell them what our expectations are. And with in our own characteristic, we'll target it in terms of timelines and follow up, follows through. So that's what the IOD is doing. I hope I got the question right. Thank you.
I believe you did. Otumba, do you want to add to that?
Yes, someone can add to that.
Yes, I wanted. Well, I'm lying, I'm in tune with what the president has said. But I think those of us should educate those within our spaces that they should vote without inducement and they should go out to vote. We shouldn't just sit down as directors to say that, well, we're leaving it for those out there to vote. Everybody's vote will count. And so it is very necessary and very importantly, we will all collect a PVC and we go out to vote. We can't come back later to start to, what I say, to start to bow down or whatever the, the, the process without being part of it. So please, all I would say is let us educate those around us, those within our spaces that they should not be, they should not be induced into voting for a particular candidate. They should vote according to their conscience. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you. Thank you so much. We have a few more questions here. I'm going to take the next one in line. I can see, good evening and thanks for this initiative. I got inducted into the institute only last year. So maybe that's why I don't know the answer to this question. What is the institute doing in terms of advocacy for equal gender representation on the boards of public and public interest companies? I think she's saying public quoted, public interest companies in the first instance. So what is the institute doing in terms of advocacy for equal gender representation on boards? Doctor Gdemba, do you want to go?
Okay. Well, okay. All right. Let me say that the institute is supporting others, others who are trying to see what is going on with the legislation of what we presented, representation in votes in Nigeria. But at the moment, there's no specific effort that we are making along these lines. But what we have done, which is fundamental, is building our independent director capacity. We have programs that we are specially designed for independent directors to train them so that they can hold on their own, having gone through our programs in whatever board they have been appointed, whether it's public interest entities or otherwise. So this is one major contribution that IOD is making, building the pipeline. But in terms of being out there in terms of activism or activism, I would say, we haven't done much along, along those lines. We want to be sure that we have capable people and then we can then push them because we are confident that if appointed, they will discharge their responsibilities heavily. Particularly in line with the recent code for corporate governance that requires organizations to have independent directors on the approach. We are also working seriously to get the charter. It will also position us properly in terms of making sure that IOD directors and females, you know, because everybody is now beginning to realize that it is profitable, it is advantageous to have diverse boards that women actually bring something. It's not just about quota. They bring something substantial to the table. So I think that that's my answer to that, to that question.
Before you. Okay, before you, there's someone that that has said something similar. So I just want to sort of like join that so that you can wrap it up in that. There's some, I see that in the chat box and this person says, oh, my name is Fumi Lama. I have been honored to have been invited to join the faculty of the institute, facilitating a session on the CDC course. I would like to know whether WDDC has any deliberate program for finding vacancies and placing interested women directors on reputable company boards. So it's similar to what it is that you're saying. I just wanted to throw that in so that we don't repeat the question.
Yeah. And yes, closely, maybe you can see we are laying the foundation closely related to it is what the chair of WDDC has talked about, about apprenticeship and all that. These are areas that dispose people and from there you take it on. We have independent directors register. Which is also available to people who ask for it, try to make people do. Sometimes they also request for directors of IOD. And in some cases, the female directors will be specifically requests for them.
Thank you ma'am. That wasn't very clear, but we tried to hear what's interesting. It's not very clear about Otumba Oshibo. Please ma'am, you want to add to that? Because I saw your mic, your mic are muted. So I'm like, okay, maybe you want to say something. Okay, no, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you everyone. We are getting, we're getting closer. It's getting more interesting. I have a few more questions. Somebody says, I would like some clarification around the qualifications for fellowship of the institute. What has changed, if anything, and why? That is from Adam Kemi Adewole. So I'd like to have qualifications around the, the, the qualifications for fellowship of the institute.
Okay, I'm not going to detail. I'll call the director of membership. I hope she's here. Or the Digi to tell them about the details.
Director of membership.
Number of years. At the last count, I think it was like five years or seven years, I think, at the last.
Okay.
Seven years was adopted and there's so many other factors, which include the degree of activity, activity level in the institute, for instance, membership of committees, attending too many events. For instance, also encouraging or supporting the institute. I don't hear.
It's not very clear. I'm actually straining to hear you.
Trying to get another device for me.
Yes, it's better than that.
Supporting the institutes, maybe through sponsorships.
Okay.
So many other ways apart from membership of committees. These are things that are put together. That we have a set out criteria, right, with waiting for the various aspects. And so we have a committee of fellows at awards committee chaired by a past president, which the, the, the the secretariat directs all these things and then sends to them to evaluate. The point is that it is not automatic in the sense that the council has a certain number of people, maximum or lead that can be made fellows in a particular way. So they have to wait all these things are wrapped then before it is brought to the council to review.
Oh, wow. Your sound has now become muffled. We can't even hear it anymore. Before we're still straining, but right now it's, it's a bit, it's not even clear.
I think, I think she wants me to. Yes, yes. Yes, madam.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I, I think the president has given the framework. One, you must have been a member of the institute for seven years and seven years means that they've financially updated for seven years. Not that when it is seven years now coming at the backlog of, of debt you vote. So you've been financially active for seven years. You must be a member or have been a member of an IOD committee. You must have been very active. There are also some expedited training programs that you aspire to have attended in the course of your membership of the institute. Uh but like the the president said, the most critical part of it is your uh. Activness within the institute in terms of participation in programs and also in terms of support for the institute. Uh every year we have uh quite a number of people.
Is that me or is that this sound? Mister Alimi? I think it's it's Mister, it's Mister Alimi. Maybe we'll go on to the next question.
Okay, so 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 that's it. Um because there's a limit, there's a process of review. And then not that people are not uh qualified, but uh it's ranked. And then um the council approves those who reveal that limits. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I I'm just gonna quickly go to, I see some raised hands. I see that um Kemi Adewole, I took your question. Do you still want to say something? Um if you still want to say something, I'm going to.
I think I was, I just went up, sorry about that.
You did.
Yes, sorry about that. Anyway, I was running off. So uh it was important then it's your activities within the institute and the support you've got from. After you've met all the other criteria. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Madame Kemi Adewole, I just asked you to mute if you still want to say something.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead ma'am.
Thank you very much, um DG for that um for the explanation and precedent. Thank you very, very much. My curiosity is that I now understand that it's seven years, but um I was wondering when it changed to seven years. And I'm just wondering whether I missed that communication. So that was my curiosity actually. Thank you very much. When did it change to seven years?
Can I go ahead, Madam President?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. Actually, it changed last year. It changed in twenty twenty two. Uh council, council decided to change it to seven years after a recommendation from the fellows committee last year.
Okay, any particular reason for that sir? Because I see the and why.
Yes, the the I think, I think, I think uh from my, because I must confess, I'm also. A part of that committee, so I cannot just look and see. I wasn't part of that decision process. Um one thing we've 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 noticed is the the uh number of people. That get, the the before now it was five years, before now it was five years. And um we realized that it's it was becoming increasingly difficult. Okay, let me start from from the beginning now. It was ten years. It was ten years.
It was ten years.
Yes, and to give more people an opportunity to get into that uh position. It was reduced to five years. And uh coming forward after about four years after that was done, because I remember it was reducing twenty eighteen. We realized that the the number of people that were qualifying every year was much more than it used to be. And incidentally, almost every year, you find out that people that are finally chosen. Are usually people who are spent between ten and eight years. Between ten and eight years as members of the institute. So that's why the fellows committee felt it is better we uh kind of uh. Uh nip the 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 problem in the border and make sure that we have um a sizable number of people that we can choose from. Uh not that, the intention is not to disqualify anybody, but the intention is to ensure that uh I think. Provide uh what I'll call uh better opportunities for those who are qualified. And allow them to, allow people to understand from the beginning what it went till for you to become, to become a fellow. Uh at at five years, we're getting this session where three hundred, four hundred who are qualified and we can only take thirty, thirty five every year. Because we're going to be more difficult.
Thank you, thank you.
May I also, may I also comment to say that it's also uh about objectivity. To be, to try and be as objective as possible so that uh you know, if the. Too many people meet the benchmark, then it becomes very, very difficult to have objective bases. For taking A and not taking B. So if it's raised to seven, at least that is a major objective. Demarcation before you start looking at other things. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. I think that we can move to another person. I'm gonna take somebody who wants to talk, engineer doctor Patricia Opene Oudile. So I'm going to, if you are ready, I have um given you permissions. Please speak ma'am. You have a question.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and uh thank you um Madame Chairman of President and uh. The chairman for the women wing. Uh I really appreciate this opportunity. Uh once again, my name is Patricia Opene Oudile. Uh I got inducted in twenty twenty one August. And I also had to fill out the forms for various committees which I'm interested in. Uh having spent about thirty five years in the oil and gas industry, which one of the very major IOCs in Nigeria. Um I I indicated that I was interested in energy, logistics and all that. But one of the things I've observed is that every time I come to the institute, I was actually even there today. Is what's going on with this committee? I've actually met with DG, tried to understand why. Then the, you know, people are not being nominated into the committees. And he said, oh, well, there are people who are sitting there and they sit there. And you know, they're working on this committee. And I said, okay, can we do something else, you know? Uh because I belong to all the bodies and I think that committees shouldn't be a long serving team. Committees should be rotational, so you can give all the people the opportunity to serve and to. And to bring to the table some fresh and new ideas. And uh today also I saw the membership uh director and she said, oh, well, we're working on it. Now that I'm here with my president, please, I'd like to know what plans do we have? To at least have people who take through committees and that way you have uh fresh ideas, you have more robust. Or or committees and you know, it it would be more dynamic than just having the same group of people. Year in and year out. And those of us who are interested in working in different committees, we're just sitting on the bench and waiting. That's my, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that very important question. And um I can see your perspective, which I totally agree with. I totally agree with you. That is very important to inject fresh ideas, to make things more robust, turn things around, especially as. Things are changing so fast, so that we don't continue to think just in a straight line. Very, very correct. Um in I O D committees are usually formed just for information uh during the year. At the initial term, the beginning of uh the tenure of the president, which is normally two, two years. So that means that committees, we have standing committees and um. Policy committees, which are like sectoral committees, like you said, like energy and so on. So um every two, two years and committees have certain size, the standing committees. Um uh something like not more than fifty. So that's a limitation in terms of standing committees. Um and then the sectora is more robust, I mean like energy. Like if you, if you, energy, you can serve in other committees, I T and so on. It's more accommodating, but um if um. Like now that you have really expressed your interest and if there's a vacancy, what we normally do is that along the line, I mean. A midterm of the president, if there are some people on those committees that have not been coming because it's not convenient for them. Then people like you who have really expressed interest can be injected or nominated to serve into those committees. I'm not trying to be defensive. I don't li- I don't like the idea that you're very much interested to serve. And I mean, we are looking for people to serve. So it is just to give you an idea of how it works. For instance, when the new uh the next president takes over, he's going to also overhaul and make sure that. Other people have a chance. Some of the people serving now, people like Otumba, they were not at the helm before. It was other people. So since you just joined in twenty twenty one, you can be sure that going forward. Will be appropriately slotted. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Opene Oudile, thank you. I see some Q and As in here, so I have three. I'm gonna take them. Ooh, our timing, like somebody had said. Um let me just, let me read, someone said something. Let me read this one. The person says, good evening, all esteemed panelists, to be honest. Twenty twenty two was the first time I got actively involved in I O D after nine years of membership. This is a a fellow and that did not become a fellow. And it was because I could feel the deliberate focus in bringing in more of us ladies who had somehow never felt connected enough. To participate previously. Kudos to Doctor Jidema and Mrs. Otumba, Mrs. Oshibogun and team. However, the I O D events need to be more compact regarding speakers and agenda setting. To avoid repetition and long drawn out events to encourage more attendance. That is a comment and suggestion. Thank you, Bashirat Oduney. Thank you, madam.
Well taken, well taken, concise and straight to the point. So we've taken the point, Bashirat.
Thank you. And so we are going to end this session at six twenty five. So please, if you, if you do have questions or you have any comments. Please raise your hand or drop your your questions in the comment box. I'm gonna take the next one from Bolanley Oduyali. Says, good evening, everyone, and that, and thank you very much for organizing this meeting. I would like to understand the following one. How is W D D C con- constituted and how are members nominated to join the different subcommittees? Are there specific criteria, well criterion required to join the committee? What is the channel of communication between W W D C, W D D C and the women directors in I O D? I sometimes get emails inviting me to seminars and that is the extent of the contact. Can we please understand the specific impact on women directors that W D D C has achieved so far? Um I'm not sure that you joined in the beginning, but okay. What effort is the committee making to bring in more female directors into the I O D? Those are three questions. Um let me sort of like summarize them again. She's saying that how is W D D C constituted? How are members nominated into subcommittees? Is there a particular criteria? She said, what is the channel of communication? Other than emails, do we get any other, is there any other way we interact? I believe that this is something has been opened up with this town hall. Um and she says that what is the impact at well? That is to be determined. And what effort is the committee making to bring in more female directors into the I O D? Thank you so much for your questions and contribution. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me as um first add the, the lady foundation in terms of. Nomination of people and appointment to various committees and then the chair of W D D C can. Then expand share on specific questions on W D D C. Thank you.
Please go ahead ma'am.
DG.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, yes, um I can, I can hear. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, good. Uh so on the issue of nomination, I think the process starts from uh the point of admittance into the institute. Um members will recall that during the admission process uh on the day of inauguration as a member, you are given the form to fill. Uh incidentally, um the the committees that are voluntary in terms of. Um you making the choice are the policy committees, which has to do with uh the various sectors where you, where you operate or where you want to operate. Um so that is for policy. But for standing committees uh that are uh that deals with like the women. Development committee, most of the time, the choice of who gets the record is based on the pedigree. And the various activities of such directors. Uh while we, while we look at the the uh C V's and resumes submitted. By prospective members when they are committing to nominate them into committees. Uh we also look at the their standing and their ability to contribute meaningfully into the activities of the of the institute. Because standing committees like this of W D D C are quite critical to the operations of the of the institute. So the process is like that for policy committees, we draw out every member. The committees that they have opted to go into and we try to fill in the vacancies as they, as they arise. Um I could just use your point to answer the other question. Really, as much as possible, we don't stay too long. In those committees, but every time there's a transition, there is always a need to ensure there is continuity. So you do not send away everybody in the committee. You definitely retain some, some existing members. And replace them with new members and the cycle continues as the the presidency changes and. I can assure you of that. So that is the process of uh nominating members to the committee and every member of the institute. Is entitled to be nominated and to be actively involved in activities of committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Otumba.
Well, thank you very much. Um well, the basic question is more of. Of knowing what the impact of W D D C on on the on the female, female members of the institute. Um the institute currently um has a uh a bit of a challenge in respect of the, the data. Of the institute and they are currently working on it because the, there's no differentiation between the gender. When we send out mails, we send to almost everybody. And so um. For all the events of of um W D D C, we send out mails and we send out text messages. As long as your, your information is on the institute's website. I mean, it's on the institute's database. And I know that the institute has sent out um, um I think surveys or something in the past for us to. Update our our data so that they can also have it stored on their database. But the impact that the committee has been having is that we are. Uh uh main thing is to try and train and to try and train um female directors. Um or as aspiring female directors so that they can settle beautifully well into their roles. And usually at the beginning, before this um uh this current committee started its tenure. There were basically two events that were flagship for this, this committee. That is the luncheon and the conference. Of course, at any conference, uh you have a lot of um. A lot of speakers when you have a topic and you discourse and so that is it. But we thought there was a need for us to now go on and do a bit of coaching. Instead, apart from mentoring, we needed to, I know that the mentoring scheme, the president can't talk about that. The presi- the institute is trying to come up with a mentoring scheme for all directors. And we do not want to separate the the female directors from that scheme. So there's a concise scheme that the institute is going to introduce very soon. But based on that, we decided to to start off the coaching programs. And we started off with the tabletop conversation, which is free and um. Uh it's just for you to have a discourse uh with somebody that is knowledgeable in that area. And then last year again, we had uh like the one-on-one, the fire chart, which was a one-on-one with um. Somebody that um uh maybe have seen it all, that would give us an idea of how. They go to the top and how they were able to retain their position on the top. So that is something that we recently introduced. And if you were with me at the beginning. I also said we're going to introduce two new programs. One is the apprenticeship program. And the second is the executive coaching program, which um will be launched very soon. And that is also to help female directors in attaining their goals. Uh in wherever they could be. I hope I've been able to answer the question.
I believe so. Um Madame Bolanley Udyali, I hope this answers your question. If not, you can still drop a message in the chat box. Um if you have any further. If not, you can still drop a message in the chat box, um, if you have any further questions. Thank you so much. I have a question uh from Bemisola Ladito. What is the process of getting on the institute's register of independent directors? I have a quick, in fact, I think I have a quick uh solution to that, even though I know that there will be more elaborated. I know that there is, the institute organizes training seminars um, for that, for uh joining the independent directors register afterwards when you take those trainings. But um, is Dr. Alimi taking this or is the president taking this? What is the process of getting on the institute's register of independent directors?
Yes, Mr. Alimi can take this.
Is he here? Yes.
I'm here. I, I think it's, and I like, I like the sound of that doctor. Though I'm not a doctor yet.
I've been calling you doctor. There's something about it.
So you're in the, you're in the spirit. Don't worry.
I am.
Um, the, the process is, is simple. First, you must be a member of the institute. That is, uh, that is the foundation. And then you attend the independent director masterclass.
Yeah.
And after attending the masterclass, uh, you will then be, uh, given the, the form, which is now an E-form. Which was to register you on the, uh, independent director list. And, and that is, that is all. That's all it takes.
That sounds very simple. Question, Madame Bemisola Ladito. I hope that answers your question. We have one more question here from Yetunde Obrema. I got inducted in twenty nineteen and I remember completing the form to join a committee, but never really got a revert. So based on the comments from the chairperson, it would be good to know the criteria to join committees in case the form feeling thing doesn't go far. Well.
Well, I would say that it's not that the form feeling doesn't go far. It's just that there's a limit to the number of people you can have in a committee. If you have a committee that you now have more than fifty people, it becomes, uh, it, it's, it's not effective again. So what we are trying to do is to review from time to time because, you know, um, circumstances may dictate that from people who indicate interest along the line, they may not have the time because having the time is also very important. If we notice, there have been instances where we would check the attendance. So people with zero attendance, for instance, and they skipped, and then we put other people as well. So it's because of that limit, um, and going forward, we try. What we have been trying to do is, um, making sure that the sectoral committees are widened, broadened in terms of the numbers. So please, there's no other criteria because everybody has to have opportunity. And there's nothing wrong with your indicating that, you know, um, beyond the form that you have filled that you are, you are interested to serve to membership committee. Um, nothing wrong with that.
Is there a difference to policy committees? Because there's somebody in the chat box saying she means policy committees.
Yeah, policy committees are the sectoral committees, which you have per sector. For instance, you have the I T sector, you have the oil and gas, energy, you have, um, um, other, other sectors where people of like minds, you know, get together. So that's, that's, those are different from the standing committees like women director development committee. So maybe what we might, might have to revisit. For instance, I've told you, a consultant even worked for us before we, we decide, we, the council approved the maximum for each committee, maximum that they think is meaningful for each committee to work affecting this, I mean, the standing committees. So maybe that can also be revisited, especially as most of the work in practical terms, sometimes you have to now break into subcommittees. Maybe we will going forward, we may have to expand a little bit i- in terms of the upper limits. Somebody was asking about mentoring.
Yes, she says it's a framework or established process for mentoring.
I would say that the director development committee and the secretariat, secretariat has been working very hard to have an enterprise-wide mentoring scheme for the institute. Mentoring scheme that is uniquely, uh, based on the specific needs of directors. And so that will be applicable to women, even though, uh, as they say, that can be domesticated a little bit. The youth, the young directors, um, forum. But mainstream I O D, so that we will optimize the resources we have in terms of experienced directors who are ready to serve as mentors and the mentees who are waiting on their heels to be mentored. I was just speaking to the secretary to that committee in the morning and their target date for for kicking this off is April, April of this year. So they've almost finished the foundational work and they need to um, work with our E R P people to see how that can be synced. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I think let me just ask, um, DG, someone asked what's the duration of the masterclass? Two days, four days? What is the duration of the masterclass?
Okay, it's a one-day program. Just a one, but it's a full-day program.
Full-day program?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I hope that answers the question. This has been, I mean, already it's six twenty-five. Obviously, we can see that if we stay here, we will still have more questions and we will still interrupt and keep going. Um, somebody said something. Let me just quickly take this comment. It says, kudos to W D D C, honor the leadership of Otumba Dibala Oshibogun for the enriching programs. I have attended the fires at chat, women conference, table talk, which were very educative and inspiring. Please keep it up. Let's have more than one town hall meeting in a year and we introduce health week for women directors, considering our responsibilities. This is Titi Lio Ashiru. Um, thank you so much for that. The one more comment. Let me see. Somebody says, great program. So we have so much, um, to share with each other. Thank you so much, everyone. I'm gonna close the questions right now. Um, we have, so please, I think this is the best time before we invite the president to give her you know, vote of thanks. I think that this is the best time to say thank you first of all by clapping your hands, saying thank you, clapping your hands, kudos, you know, thumbs up. However, this was for you, you can clap in the exactly. So we know how to go virtual. Fantastic. I can see the hands, the kudos. Thank you everyone for participating. This has been amazing. At the beginning, I wasn't sure if we're all gonna get, you know, as involved as we have been, but thank you for the valid contributions. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I see somebody here, Dr. Emeka, ah, Dr. Emeka V O B. Hmm, this is okay. We will look at that another time. Somebody says, oh, can I take this? Can I take this question from, it says, Dr. Emeka V O B. There's a question here. Should I take it? Let me see. It says, I was inducted at the till end of twenty twenty-two when I was at the National Institute for Policy and Strategic Studies. I graduated a few weeks ago from the senior executive course with the M and I. I recalled filling out forms for membership of policy committees, no revert still on that. Also, I got a mail on paying membership and all of these things. Somebody says, I thought the fees paid last year were for a year. Please explain. Thank you. Okay, so DG, do you want to quickly take this, even though we're, you know, wrapping it up? So that we were inclusive also. This is Dr. Emeka, enjoy the man.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Pritha. It's very important that we address this question. First, I will say, yes, uh, she got inducted, I think, November last year. Uh, because we had a special induction for the sec forty-three, uh, participant of NIPS, uh, which of course was a welcome development for the institute. Um, the, like the president explained, committees are, uh, changed. Membership of quality change at the onset of a new, uh, presidency and that is going to happen in June. Uh, sorry, July twenty twenty-two, that is this year, when the new president coming. I am not saying automatically you'll become a member of the committee, but what I'm saying is that that is when the consideration for new members of committee will, would happen. And let's see how that goes. Uh, secondly, the financial year of I O D is January to December of every year. And that is why you are getting, because in our, in our record, you joined the institute in twenty twenty-two. And your subscription was for the year twenty twenty-two. So this is twenty twenty-three and that was why you got, uh, another, uh, uh, an invoice for your twenty twenty-three subscription. I want to appeal to you to please understand and please pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir, for that. Right now, I'm going to invite the president, um, and chairman of council, Dr. Mrs. Ijejidema F I O D, to give her closing remarks. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you very much, uh, able moderator, Mrs. Yetunde Bankole Bernard. It's been a very good session, if I must say so. Good in the sense that it has brought all of us together. And you know, if we, if someone is even suggesting twice a year, I mean, um, more of these interactions can help to sort out things, you know? Some people feel this stand after the, um, induction, but that should not be so. Uh, that should not be the case. But it's really a great opportunity. I would like to, I'm not giving votes of thanks. I think the DJ is going to do that. But permit me to say thank you very much. Thank you very much for answering our call. I mean, if you didn't log in, then the whole thing would have been useless. I thank the W D D C for the, all the efforts they have put in. They've made a lot of efforts, you know? They get things done. I must give them credit for that. It's not enough to just say we are going to do something. By getting it done, they, they are very good in that. Um, we are not yet there. I mean, the world is changing so fast, so nobody can even say that there. So, uh, all we are saying is we need your support, we need your advice, we don't know it all. Let's work together to build a formidable institute. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, ma'am, for your closing remarks. Now, I will go to, I'm not gonna call you doctor again. Mister Dali, thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Uh, this is Bankoli Bernard. Uh, uh, this is one of the easiest, easiest job, uh, today, uh, to say thank you to everybody. It's always easy to show appreciation. Uh, I want to thank, uh, everyone. I want to thank, uh, first, let me start with the committee that planned this and thank, uh, the chairman of that committee. This is Bimbola Wright for the job well done. I want to appreciate you, madam, for the painstaking way you went through this and made sure it happened. Uh, you and I had conversation. I'm sure you could also see my, my, my doubts and caution about having it, but thank God, everything has gone very well. I really appreciate you, madam. Well done. I also want to thank the, what we'll call the initiator. And that is the, the chairman of the committee of the woman development, women directors development committee, uh, as the DG, I, I want to commend you. I want to commend your committee. And on behalf of the president, I'm doing so too. The, the committee has been very dynamic, very wonderful. You have, uh, improved our relationship and our interaction with the, with the female directors of the institute. And I feel so, so fulfilled that we are doing the right thing. The, the path of inclusion and the path of, um, uh, equity is, is really working well with you. Thank you very much, madam. Not just for this program, but for all the things that your committee has put in place to make it better. Thank you very much. I want to thank Madam President, uh, the at the beginning of tenure, she said she mentioned usual inclusiveness part of our agenda. And, and I want to say, we, 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 we have done so well in this area. And I mean, this is acknowledged even by the comment you see, uh, in the comment box here. Thank you very much, Madam President, uh, for making this happen, for attending, for providing, uh, some of the, some of the, uh, solutions to some of the issues raised here. Thank you very much. Thank you for providing the enabling environment. And to our special guest of Bonop, I'd like you to join him, Borodu. Uh, it is, it is good. I think your choice as a special guest of one was very strategic. And, uh, you know, our mothers are very wonderful people. They, they know how to plan things. Obviously, your choice as a special guest was very strategic. Uh, they wanted you to listen and so that you know what to do when it is your turn, obviously. Uh, we thank God for the opportunity and I want to thank you for staying here, uh, for the comment you made and for staying here this long. And, um, uh, to thank you especially for the support you have also given, Madam President, over the years. And of course, to our wonderful moderator, uh, Mrs. Bankoli Bernard. Uh, you've made this very, if I didn't know, we have spent almost, almost two hours. Thank you very much, madam, for the very, uh, competent way you abandoned this. I want to say a very big thank you and sacrifice you made. You came all the way to ensure that you are for the program from within the institute so that there will be no break. Thank you very much for coming. I want to thank everybody that has attended this program. We had at the point over one hundred participants. It's unprecedented. I want to say a very big thank you to you all for creating the time. Especially at this period where we're all going through one thing or the other. Like they say on the street, we are going through a lot. I thank you. I thank you for, for attending. And of course, to my colleague in the secretariat, uh, starting with the secretary of the committee, director of membership, this is Senna I O D G. And of course, all the other staff who are supporting the I T. We say very big thank you for making sure this, this run seamlessly. Thank you very much and I wish everyone, uh, a wonderful evening and a good night rest. Thank you very much, Madam Pritha.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.